Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for November 22. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
We can't hear you on our end, but here.
Present, if it helps.
Yeah, just speak a little louder.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Ormsby to brief the advanced agenda for November 29.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. On the administrative session for the November 29 meeting under consent items, the first item is the presentation of the Spokane Airport Board 2022 budget, and I see Larry Crowder, Todd Woodard, and Rob Schultz are here, and I believe Mr. Schultz is going to present the budget.
All right, welcome.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Ormsby, and good afternoon, Council President, members of council, and happy Thanksgiving to all of you. I just wanted to introduce Rob Schultz. Rob is our new Chief Financial Officer, and he comes from the Port of Portland, where he worked for many years in the finance areas, very familiar with aviation, but also had responsibilities in other sections of the port, including maritime-related items. Rob started on October 4 here, so he's relatively new, and we brought him in just in time to jump into the budget and into the airline consultations and the rate-making process for 2022, and he's done a phenomenal job, and we're delighted to have him on our team. So with that, Rob, would you please proceed, and we're happy to answer any questions that council has as we go through the budget.
Thank you, Larry, and thank you to the council for having us today. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with the budget presentation, and as I'm going through this, if you have any questions, as Larry said, please feel free to interrupt, and we'll get those questions answered for you. All right, so that should be in presentation mode for folks. Oh, there we go. Now it's in presentation mode. Sorry about that. Okay, we're going to go ahead with the 22 budget, and this, as Larry mentioned, we took this to airline consultation. We'll go over that here in a minute or two, but just wanted to start off with the presentation. And there we go. Okay, first slide. So first of all, as in years past, we are not asking for any funds from city council today. The airport is financially self-sufficient, and the funds from the airport come from system users. What you see on the screen here is a couple of the revenues that we generate from system users. Some of the operating revenues, what we have is parking and ground transportation fees. We have terminal concessions, so that's our food, beverage, retail that we have here at the airport. We have some tenant rents from there, and a lot of that is the airline-driven rents that we have from leasing space at the airport. And then we have airline landing fees. So those are some of the main operating revenues that we have, and driven again from activity at the airport itself. One of the things we'll go over touch base on a little bit today is capital. So capital projects, we have different funding sources for those, and so you can see a couple on the screen right now. The AIP is an airport improvement program to grant through a federal grant. You can see the funding sources for those. We also have Department of Transportation grants, both federal and state, and we'll talk a little bit about the federal ones for a project that we have ongoing right now.
Hey, Rob, I'm not sure if it's just me, but I'm still just seeing the very first slide.
Thank you, Kate. I was going to say the same thing. You're not advancing.
I was just making sure, yeah, it's not changing to the next one.
Okay, so you're not seeing the Spokane Airport's financially self-sufficient one. You're seeing just the welcome screen?
Yeah, just the airport budget discussion.
Okay. It's changing online, but that doesn't obviously do any good if you're not seeing that, right? Let me stop sharing, let me try to share it again, if that's okay? We'll see if that will correct it for us. Sorry about that, and thank you for bringing that up. Is that any better?
No, we see nothing now, Rob.
You're seeing nothing now? Yeah, would you mind? Yeah.
Now we see the cover page.
Back to the home screen.
Is that working?
I think we better budget for you to get a better computer.
Yeah. Go to the next slide, see if it'll go to the next slide.
Okay. Is it switching for you?
No.
Okay, we're going to do option B, which is Kelly is going to share her screen.
Okay.
So sorry about that, folks.
We see the home screen now. I think this, yeah, now we're on the second one.
We can see the second slide now, Rob.
Okay. All right, and is it switching right now? No, it's not.
It will switch when you let Kelly know to switch.
I think that's what the best process is going to be for this. Kelly, I think you have control, so I will, yeah, let you know. Thank you for doing that, and sorry about the technical difficulties today. All right, so as I was talking with the capital projects revenue, so there's two there. You have AIP, which is the Airport Improvement Program grant. You have federal and state Department of Transportation grants. And then the two other ones for very specific approved projects is PFC, so passenger facility charge, as well as customer facility charge. The PFC is on traveling passenger tickets, and the CFC is on rental car transactions. Again, I want to highlight that those sources are used for very specific approved projects, and those are regulated by federal agencies where appropriate on there. So Kelly, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide for me? Thank you, and so I'll just touch briefly on the process that we've taken for the 22 budget. This is very similar to previous years for those that have been on council previously. And so we'll start by gathering information on maintenance and operating expenses at the airport and compile all that together. We deduct any kind of offsetting revenues. One of the main ones is terminal concessions that lowers what the airlines are responsible for. But essentially, once you put all those expenses together, you take some of those offsets out of there, what you essentially have remaining is what the airlines are responsible for. So a little bit about the rate modeling. One of the two major components that you'll see throughout the presentation today is activity. Activity is really key for us in terms of what's driving not just revenues, but operating expenses and activity at the airport. The two biggest ones, obviously, are passengers and landed wait. So we'll talk a little bit about passengers and landed wait for '22, as well as a comparison to a couple of previous years. We go through a process of essentially kind of estimating or truing up some information for previous years, especially '21. We will enter all the '22 data and apply those to different cost centers. And what comes out of that is really two main rates for us, which is the terminal rental rate, so what does it cost for an airline or other entities to rent space at the airport, at the terminal itself, and then landing fees. And you'll see a little bit more about these on the next couple of slides we have. So Kelly, if you wouldn't mind going to slide number three? Thank you. So this is one that I think just tells a really good story about activity at the airport. What you have here on the left-hand side is our enplanements. On the right-hand side, you have landed wait. I'll touch base on enplanements just for a few minutes. So this is the comparison between 2019 and 2022, year-over-year comparison in terms of activity. 2019 is our highest year of passenger activity at Spokane International, and obviously is also pre-pandemic numbers, and that's really a key for this. 2019 has essentially become the new baseline for airports and the airline industry. So why we're bringing that in is a really quick comparison in terms of how we are recovering because of the pandemic. So you see the 2019 numbers, obviously, 2020 very heavily impacted from the pandemic itself. '21, you started seeing some recovery as we went throughout the year. That really started in the March-April timeframe in terms of seeing some level, I won't say normalcy, but getting back toward that in that timeframe. And then '22, you continue to see the recovery. So on the lower side of that, you'll see the annual enplanements. So we are anticipating or forecasting about 1.9 million, or a little bit under 1.9 million, which is about a 13% increase over '21 numbers, but we're still about 7.2% below 2019 numbers. But it also really does paint a really good story that recovery is starting to get there. And really, part of that is a lot of the leisure travel is really where the demand has been. Business travel is lagging right now at this point in time, where hopefully that will come back throughout '22 and '23. On the right-hand side, we have landed wait, and this tells another really good story for us in terms of activity at the airport. 2019, we did about 2.7 million of 1,000 pounds of landed wait. You can see the '20 numbers, '21 numbers. Really, '22 is where the big story is. We are anticipating landed wait to be higher than 2019, and that's really due to two different reasons. That's going to be passenger carrier routes, so we've added a handful of new routes throughout '20 and '21, as well as we have additional cargo activity at the airport. And so right now, we're forecasting based on some inputs we get from the airlines as well as staff estimates, we're anticipating the landed wait to be higher than in 2019, so about 5.1% increase over 2019 numbers. Kelly, if you wouldn't mind going on to the next slide for me? Thank you. So a little bit about the budget process itself in terms of where we are in the process. So we've gone to consultation with the airlines. We did that on November 12. We have an agreement right now with the airlines through December 31. We proposed a one-year extension with the airlines. We presented the rates and charges to them, and at this point in time, we've had no questions from the airline committee on that. The next bullet is the rate summary for '22, and this kind of gives a summary of where we're at in comparison to previous years. So for terminal rents, we are at $60.70 per square foot per annum, and that is up from $59.19. So it's about a 2.6% increase in the terminal rental rate that we have. Landing fee, we're going to be up just right around 3%, and it goes from $2.10, which is this year's rate, to $2.16 in '22. We've given updates to the airport board. That was last week on November 18. Obviously, we're at city council today, and we'll go to the Board of County Commissioners on November 30. And Kelly, if you could advance to the next slide, please. So this is the sources and uses document. There's a lot of information here. I'll just kind of summarize it, maybe a couple of points on this. On the left-hand side there, you'll see the non-operating sources of revenue that we have. That's a little bit of what we talked about on a couple of slides ago. So it's the CFC revenue, it's the PSC collections that we have, and then grant activity. You can see the numbers in terms of anticipated revenue from each one of those sources. And again, just to highlight the uses of that, CFC is really, the benefit can only benefit rental car agencies, so there's no other use for those funds besides something that benefits rental car agencies. In terms of PSCs, there's a very specific criteria in terms of uses for that. That's governed by the FAA, and the projects that you fund with that have to meet certain criteria, and you can see the five on there, which is safety, security, capacity, noise, and competition. And then the grants, there's very specific grant-funded projects on there, and we have to get essentially approval from the FAA for that and get awarded a grant for discretionary grants from the FAA. On the right-hand side of that is our operating revenues and expenses. I will go through all of those ones, but essentially what you have is different cost centers that we have at the airport, how that's driving revenue in terms of incoming revenue, as well as what expenses on the outgoing side. For total, so we're going to have some operating cash that we will have based on that, but we're going to end up using that for airport-funded projects and equipment. You can see those numbers at the bottom sides there, and that, most of those funds are probably going to be used for airport-funded projects and equipment, but those also can be used to maintain operational reserves for the airport itself. We'll do that kind of quick. I'll just pause here for just a quick second. Any questions on that so far? Okay, Kelly, if you wouldn't mind advancing to the next slide? I'll just briefly go through this, and so as you saw, again, activity really is driving things at the airport. So for '22, excuse me, sorry, we're in '21, apologize. So what we're looking at for '21 year estimate is we're going to be over on projected revenue, about 17.4% above budget, and we will be under on expenses. What that's really driving for us is our cost per enplanement on the bottom side there. So we are anticipating a cost per enplanement of $9.87. We're going to be somewhere right around the $6.57 is what we're anticipating right now. So good improvement on there, and that really is driven by those top, the bullets right above there, which is landed wait and enplanements. Those are essentially projected to be higher than what we had budgeted for '21. Kelly, if you could advance to the next slide, please. This is the '22 budget highlights, and I'll just briefly go over this and hit a couple of points on this. The top one there is our operating revenues. That's where we anticipate $42 million, and that, again, is an increase from both projected right now as well as budgeted revenue, and that, again, is driven by activity. We'll go over the operating expenses on the next slide. You can see that, but again, that is going to be an increase over the '21 in terms of projected as well as budgeted, and again, that really derives directly to activity at the airport itself. For capital improvements, we have a program of about $75 million for '22. You can see the different sources. We grouped them into a couple of different ones, so $16 million in either grants, PFCs, CFCs, or other transactions that we have at the airport. We have an anticipated spending for Trex Phase 1. Trex stands for Terminal Renovation and Expansion Project. We are hoping to enter Phase 1 of that in '22. We're anticipating about $45 million in spending on there, and in parentheses, you see that note there. What that is, is we, over the next couple of months, we're going to be determining the plan of finance for Trex Phase 1 on there. Likely, that will include some level of debt financing on there, but again, that is information that we are starting to put together now in terms of what those funding sources are going to be for the expansion and renovation project. And the last bullet is we have anticipated up to 13.9 million of airport funds, and those are anticipated uses for all those numbers, so obviously, things flow throughout the year, but that is our anticipated capital improvement program for 2022. Kelly, if you could go to the next slide for me? This is a little bit more about operational expenses in terms of what's driving that increase that you saw on that previous slide. One is staffing levels. So we reduced staff during the pandemic, but given where business activities are, we need to increase staff back to near pre-pandemic levels. That's a process we've started to undergo already. One of the other things that a lot of entities are having trouble with is materials and supplies. It's the supply chain challenges as well as inflation related to that, so that's driving some of those operating expenses in terms of that increase that we talked about. One of the other ones that is driving some increase is reopening of all the parking options here at GEG, and so we are reopening the economy lot that reopened about two weeks ago. We also restarted the shuttle bus service on there, and so again, that's driving some increase in operating expenses. Next one is we're going to anticipate a little bit, we are anticipating higher snowfall prediction for the winter season, so that goes directly some of the operating expenses in terms of clearing the runways and the roadway surrounding the airports. And then we're also going to look at application of both PRISA and ARPA funds to help fund operational expenses at the airport. Any comments or questions about that? All right, moving on to the capital projects, just a little bit more detail on a couple of the major projects that we have for each category. And so on that previous couple of slides ago, you saw the 16.1 million in those funds. This is a little bit more detail about that. So we have a US DOT grant for the transload facility out there, that's a $10 million grant, and that construction has started with the transload facility. We also have an EDS installation here at the airport. EDS stands for Explosive Detection System, so new equipment that is TSA-funded on there. So those are two sources for those projects. You can see the other ones. I'll just point out real quick, with the Trex one, again, likely, as I said, it's going to be a debt issuance for that. Part of that is going to be funded with a PSC revenue for the eligible portion of the annual debt service on that project. We will use some CFC funds for the Ground Transportation Center improvements, Phase 3 of that, and you can see a little bit about the airport funds that I mentioned on a couple of slides ago in terms of spending up to a certain amount. Those are some of the anticipated projects that we have in our '22 program. We'll go through all of those in detail, but you can see the listing of some of those major ones that we have for '22. And with that, I think, if Kelly, if you want to go to the next slide, that is the presentation for the '22 budget, and happy to answer any questions that council members have on the information presented.
Any questions from council? All right, well, thank you. As the viewing public may or may not know, the city owns half the airport, so it's a really important book of business for us, but it's managed beautifully by members of the team that are here today and many others. So thank you for all your work, and we'll look forward to approving this coming up.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being here. Next, we'll move on to the second item on the action item for agenda for next week. It's a proposed five-year value blanket for precast concrete products, and Lauren Suro from the Water Department is here to present this.
Good afternoon, council members. This is a request for a five-year value blanket for precast concrete, that's concrete meter boxes and manhole riser rings when we repave streets. It's a three-department, street department, wastewater, and water would use products off of this. A total term of five years with CD8 ready mix for a total spend of $250,000 in five years.
Any questions for Lauren? Thank you, Lauren. Next is a proposed updated five-year contract with Kale America for parking equipment used around downtown, and Chris Becker is here to present the item. Chris.
Thank you. This is a contract with CalA for the purchase of the kiosks for our parking system. This was originally approved earlier this year, and the vendor has requested that we amend some of the language regarding indemnification and liquidated damages. So those changes require that we bring this back through council for approval.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris. The next item is proposed leases for Ford Rangers for two departments, and Rick Giddings from Fleet is here to present this item. Rick.
Ormsby, good afternoon, council president, council members. Because a suitable economically viable electric or clean-juled vehicles are not currently available, Fleet Services is seeking approval to lease two 2022 Ford Rangers, one for code enforcement and one for River Park Water Reclamation Facility. These are three-year open-ended leases. Monthly cost for each vehicle is $516.54, for a total of $18,595.44 per vehicle, including sales tax. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, not seeing any questions. We'll move to the next item, and that's a proposed contract for replacement of the HVAC boiler at Station 1, and David Stockdale from the Spokane Fire Department is here to present this item. I like, I guess he's not, I see that Chief Schaefer, I think, is on the call. Brian, are you able to present this item?
Absolutely. This item is the contract and payment for the replacement of the original boiler at Fire Station 1 that I think everybody on council actually saw the video of what it was, but it allows us to make that payment via that contract.
Any questions for Chief Schaefer? Thank you, Brian. The next two items relate to the Project Management Office, and Dusty Frederickson is here to present those. One's a contract extension and one's a contract amendment. Dusty.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. Good afternoon, council president, council members. I am briefing two items, as Mike said. One is a contract extension for infant innovations. They are one of our series solutions. They also have a strong skill set in supporting our Just wear production. $10,000 of our track services budget to fund this project to the end of 2022.
Any questions for Dusty?
No. Mr. Ormsby?
Having a concern.
Could you?
Yes.
I think we might have skipped over number six, the Matrix Consulting.
We did. I was just going to admit, I do that at least once every meeting, and this time, I got it out of the way early in the meeting. I did skip proposed item number six, and that is a report from Tanya Wallace on a proposed contract with Matrix Consulting Group for police and fire department overtime studies. Tanya.
Thank you, council. It has been about five, six months in the making to get us to this point of the contract in front of you to be awarded to Matrix for the overtime study for both police and fire. The cost will be about $110,000. Are there any questions?
Looks like Councilwoman Mum has a question. Tanya?
Yes.
Hi, Tanya. I'm very thankful this is coming forward, based on what we heard earlier today, critically necessary for this analysis. I will say, last time we hired Matrix, there was a delay in the report, and you might want to go back and read some of the news articles if you hadn't, in terms of how it was processed. So it came to the mayor and the council and was held back, and I just think this, in particular, needs to have full transparency, and when this report is final, I'm just asking that it is given to all the council members at the same time that the mayor and staff receive it. Thank you.
Point taken. Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilwoman Wilkerson.
No, Mike. I was waving at the janitor. My apologies.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, next, we'll move to item number nine, which is a request for approval of the write-off of certain accounts receivable, and Michelle Murray, our Director of Accounting, is here to cover this item.
Mike, I didn't read eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dusty.
That's okay, Mike. So I'm going to do eight?
Yes, please.
This is a contract amendment, which is the extension. Keeping our Volt vendor contractors onboard through 2022 to finish the E-Series projects, so we're looking for approval to use $240,000. so looking for approval to use $240,000.
Now, I guess, Michelle, we're ready to go to you for item number nine.
Actually, I did have a quick question on Volt.
Okay.
In the past, we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on outside contractors for project management, and I know that we had hired new project management folks to try to alleviate these expenses. I'm just wondering, did we have a staffing issue? Do you anticipate this quarter million dollars being a perpetual cost?
Dusty, we're having a hard time hearing you.
It's Monday. You guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. No, ma'am, I do not see this being a perpetual cost. Are actually going to look into convert one of those contractors to the U-series to continue to support the U-series solution into the future. Do not, this is the money that we need to get us through project completion, get the solution in production, so we can support it alongside our other number of applications.
So in summary, I think you said this is one-time money?
Yes, ma'am. Through the end of the year. We've been using, just to be clear, this contract, we've used them before, we're using them by the time 2021 on the U-series solution.
Maybe they can help you with your internet connectivity, too. Sounds great.
Okay, thanks, Dusty.
Yes, sir.
Michelle, I think you're up.
Thank you, council members, council president, council members. For some information about a receivable that the accounting department has been carrying for a couple of years, in regards to some parking meter kiosks and some money being collected by a third-party vendor and not being remitted from the city, or remitted to the city. So in 2012, the Spokane Parking Department contracted with Duncan Solutions to provide a software platform to issue parking infractions from handheld devices. Then in 2014, the city explored to launch the software for the application to allow payment to be made from via smartphones. The city contracted through Duncan Parking Technologies, a division of Duncan Solutions, with a third party called Local Mobi, to then breach their contract and quit remitting the revenue to the city. There has been some injunctions, and they have filed bankruptcy, and the recovering of these funds is highly unlikely. So I'm just requesting a council's approval to write a principal of $85,231, and interest on late fees of $48,139, for a total of $133,370 to be written off, that will be, again, charged as bad debt to the parking services. Does anybody have any questions?
Not seeing any. I would move, thanks, Michelle, move to item number 10, and this is the inter-local agreement regarding the Envision Center being brought back to council for consideration, and Dave Steele from our Facilities Management Division is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. This is, like Mike mentioned, a return to the Envision Center inter-local agreement between the three parties, which is the City of Spokane, Spokane County, and the Spokane Workforce Development Committee. Again, this lays the groundwork for the next, well, a little bit under three years now, but to the middle of 20, sorry, two years, middle of 2023. So this splits the operating expenses of the lease, and then allows the Spokane Area Workforce Development Committee, Council Committee, to continue to do the programming and all of the program provisions there. This also gets the city caught back up. Over the summer, I'm sure you're all recalling that the city footed the bill for three straight months. As part of this, the city can then go back and get two of those three, as the one-third, one-third shared paid back. So, any questions?
Councilwoman Kinnear?
Thanks, Dave. Three years is a long time, because they've already gone past their pilot. I'm wondering if there's any indication when Envision Center would be able to be up and running on its own without other help, city help or county help?
I can't speak to that, but what I can speak to is, I misspoke when I said it is two years. It's till 2023, of May of 2023, so we've got a two-year window here that we're looking at.
And this is, Brian, I was just going to point him, they're hoping to be self-sufficient sooner than that, but that's the landlord will only sign a lease with a government entity, not a nonprofit. So they signed it with the county, so this is really trying to give some assurances to the county that we'll be in for two years, if they don't become self-sufficient before then.
Councilwoman Cathcart?
Yeah, so if we wanted a shorter term, say, to approve a year and then reevaluate, would that be possible, or is that impossible, the way this is structured?
Under the current structure, that would not work, because I believe, and I'm just double-checking.
It's not, yeah, this agreement does not provide for that.
Yeah, the county has already signed on for the full two years, so.
So it's yes or no, as it is? Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Mom?
Yeah, you know, I got to say, I kind of feel like we should have a council representative when these things are negotiated, because it's kind of like an all or nothing, like when it's brought to us, it's like, oh, no, it's going to kill the whole deal. How do we improve our communication on these kinds of things when we're doing inter-agency negotiations on these kinds of deals?
I guess what I could say in this particular instance is that this all came out of a discussion that happened at the Leadership Council meeting, which includes from the city, both the mayor and the council president, and includes the elected officials from the county and also from the city of Liberty Lake. So it's probably incumbent upon all of us to just communicate better.
It would sure be nice to have some options. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilkerson?
Thank you, thank you, Mike. And I hear it's for two years, but maybe they won't need the second year. It's kind of like the same discussion we had with fire. Are we being really prudent, or kind of speculating a little bit for the second year? So I do have some concerns about it. I know it sounds like it's an all or nothing, which is certainly distressing to me.
Councilwoman Stratton?
To comment that the last time that I was at the center and talked to folks over there, they were very successful in some of the grants that they were getting, and very hopeful. They had a couple folks working on just grant writing and getting those requests out there. So I would like to give them the opportunity to continue that and to get themselves built up to where they can be self-sufficient, and I think that they're going to be successful doing that.
Councilwoman Mom?
I'm just wondering, is the way this is written, is the second year is only if needed, instead of outright?
No, I think this is, the best way to look at this, I think, would be as a not-to-exceed contract, like some of the construction contracts. So it's for two years, but I think the hope is that it won't be needed for at least a portion of the second year. But it is a two-year commitment from the city.
But not to exceed, that's a little better. Thank you.
Not to exceed two years, right. Or it would take additional council action for it to exceed two years.
So, Mike, you probably can't see me.
I can.
I just want to comment on Councilmember Stratton, that they are writing grants, and they are really pursuing other monies. But as a nonprofit, they are on a fiscal year also, so I would think they would be knowing in the next year what their budget's going to look like as they plan for the future. So that was just my concern, over two years, because a nonprofit will know next year if they'll be able to participate or not.
And the other thing I would add is that it was discussed, I don't know if that's been scheduled or not, but that they would come to the council quarterly, or however often we want to give updates during this period.
And I was just going to chime in a couple of things. First, the Workforce Development Council, we, the city, went to them several years ago and asked them to get involved. This was not their thing, so they weren't doing anything with rent. They were just providing a little bit of programmatic oversight for the other 15 or 20 nonprofits that agreed to partner with the city, and they gradually took more of an ownership, but it wasn't something they sought out, so it was really their public service. But once it was in jeopardy of going away, they stepped up and started using some of their own money to do it. The way they explain it to me is, they are pursuing grants, but the big change is, they're talking to the, again, 15 or 20 nonprofits that operate out of there, and are telling them, hey, they need to put in some rent money for their own grants. So originally, they just asked those nonprofits to come down and staff it, and they told them, it won't cost you anything, you'll serve your normal clients, but they'll be here, one stop, one shopping, lots of collaboration. And now they're telling them, hey, when you're going to your funders and your grants, write in some money to pay a piece of the rent here. So they're hoping that that will, as those grant cycles for all those different organizations come in, they'll do that. And the other thing is, for me, that was very compelling, aside from all the great work and success they've had, is we, the city, were paying 100% of this, and so we've now negotiated that we're only paying a third for the next year. So I just think it's a, next two years, potentially. So it's a gradual off-ramp, but we have substantially changed the city's financial position.
Any other questions or perspectives to share before we move to the next item? Not seeing any. Move to item number 11, and this is to seek authority from the city council to award the TRAP funds received from the State Department of Commerce, and Margaret Hansen is here to present this item.
Thank you, and good afternoon, council. As Mike said, on behalf of CHHS Department and the CHHS Board, I'm requesting permission to award $10.2 million in Department of Commerce run assistance to Live Stories. The CHHS Evaluation Review Committee, it's part of the board, reviewed the current run assistance program, including metrics and deliverables, grantee performance, and based on that performance, including the total funds distributed and the partnerships that have been developed, that the city, they recommend that the city continues to contract with Live Stories and award them the full award.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess I have pretty strong concerns. I mean, I think from everything I've been hearing from folks who are actually using Live Stories, it has not been a very easygoing process, and lots of delays, and they're struggling, from what I've heard, from a lack of labor as well. And so I guess why we're not opening this up for other folks to come in, I'm not entirely sure. Is there more clear answer on that?
Yes, and I haven't, oh, Kirsten, did you want to respond?
Go ahead. I can or you can, doesn't matter.
I have not had, I haven't heard a lot of negative feedback on the Live Stories portal, the process, and they actually have one of the fastest processing timelines, and are actually sought after by other jurisdictions. So regarding why with RFP, we just are really concerned about any gap in terms of service to the community, if we RFP these funds, we would see a gap, as Live Stories will be spunked out of their current awards, their current funding by mid-December at the latest.
But we could allocate a portion to them to finish out, and then you could always bring in a different vendor for the other portion, couldn't you?
Yeah, and we've suggested to the council that we move forward with the recommendation from the CHHS Board, which is to award these commerce funds, and then we could RFP, per your request, we could RFP another award from the Department of Treasury, it's approximately $5.4 million, that we could RFP out.
Okay.
The ordinance would allow for us to move forward and avoid any kind of gaps in service to the community.
Okay.
Councilwoman Mom?
As someone who sat on part of the RFP committee, there were not a lot of applicants, and we, in fact, awarded to three different ones, just for a capacity reason. So I would hate to have any interruption in service to people who need this money. You know, certainly open to possibly doing it one more time, but I wouldn't be surprised if we had the same situation. Thank you.
I would also like to add that if anyone does have concerns about the Live Stories process or their operations, we're happy to connect to you and meet with them, so you can get all of your questions answered. So happy to do that, or get, you know, meet with some of the providers that they're working with, and how it's been going for them as well, and address any issues that may be happening.
Councilwoman President, it looks like you had a question or a point to make.
Yeah, so I'd like the idea of the other $5 million going to RFP, and that's, is that the plan? Because I did suggest that, that we basically RFP a third of the 15 million, and this would be the two-thirds. Because I think getting some other providers in there, and also, a lot of the providers aren't spent out, and so it won't go any faster. So is that a likelihood that we'll see an RFP process for the other money?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Any other questions for Margaret or Kirsten? Thank you for being here. The next two items are the typical placeholder items that we have at the conclusion of the consent agenda. The first is the report of the mayor of pending claims and payments, and the second is the approval by the city council, city council meeting minutes. Next, we go to the legislative session, and there are two, or there are proposed reappointments to two boards, the Airport Board and the Bicycle Advisory Board, and those are reappointments. And then we go to the legislative agenda, where we have a series of special budget ordinances, and Paul and Josie from the Budget Office is here to present the first four SBOs. Paul?
Thank you, Mike. Good afternoon again, council president, council members. The first special budget ordinance on the agenda can be found on PDF page 453 of your packet. This SBO provides $250,000 in budget authority in the asset management fund for the Facilities Management Department to make capital improvements at the Cannon Shelter facility. Does roll through? Okay, questions?
I just want to make sure I understand this. So this $250,000, it's not going to increase size as far as providing more beds, correct?
I believe, I believe it's just the capital improvements. I think there's some electrical work, and I think I remember Jake Miller from our office briefing this at Finance Committee, there is the RV trailer that they are.
Right, okay. Thanks.
And Councilwoman Wilkerson?
Thank you. So Councilwoman Stratton, that was for isolation beds, is what that was for, but I'm a little concerned as to up-did, as to what's actually going on down there. So the permanent shelters, I believe, are already in place. Councilwoman Cathcart was sharing, he'd had some additional information on what's going on down there. So if anybody could give me a quick update, if anyone on this call knows what's actually happened down there, and are we truly within the $250,000 budget?
Let me, Councilwoman, let me follow up with CHHS staff, because they're probably the ones that would have the answers to that, and I think they probably checked out at the end of the last item.
Okay. Mr. Armsby, if I can just interject real quickly. Councilmember, this was $250,000 that we're transferring from CHHS appropriation, from CHHS into the facilities fund, so that the facilities group that is in charge of doing capital improvements and such to our facilities can actually access the funding. This was something that you This was something that you had approved in June, actually, and we set aside $250,000 for any capital renovations that we might need in order to fully operate a 24/7 operation shelter. So now that the award has been, for services, has gone through, we're working with the provider so that we can get the most highest priority capital needs addressed. The first out of the gate are those electrical items that you have in front of you. We don't imagine that the electrical fixes will take all of the $250,000 and that funding will continue to be reserved for Cannon and for capital needs that come up. But those are the, the electrical needs are the most immediate capital needs at this time. But we'd be more than happy to give you capital updates as we progress and let needs get identified as we continue owning our 24/7 shelter facility. Does that help?
And thank you, Tanya, for that. Yes, we do own it, and I do support us taking care of what we own and is needed. I was just concerned, maybe what I had in my mind of what was the priority is not in alignment with how the funds are being used. But we can talk offline, and I could talk to CHHS also.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think Jeff Teal from Facilities is probably, as Tanya said, may well be managing the project, so we can touch base with him, too. And Councilmember McCaffrey.
Yeah, I just, I got a call this last week from someone who was just sharing that some of what was in the briefing paper didn't necessarily match what was the actual need out at Cannon. And so I have not yet had a chance to follow up with the Guardians and get their perspective on it yet. But that's what was shared with me. And so the concern or the question was really just making sure that we know kind of all the details of what's being done out there.
Okay. Tanya and I can follow up on that and get a report back to all the council members, hopefully in the next couple of days. Any other questions on the first SBO? Okay, Paul, the second one.
Thank you again. The next SBO starts on PDF page 456 of your packet. This provides $133,000 in budget authority in the Asset Management Fund for the Facilities Management Department to replace the boiler that serves Spokane Fire Department's Fire Station 1.
Any questions? Next, I guess, Paul, the next one.
The next SBO starts on PDF page 459 of your packet. This SBO is a cleanup ordinance C36111, which council adopted back on October 4th, 2021, related to the Clark Avenue landslide. The SBO on the agenda would move the revenue and expenditures related to the project from the General Fund to the Artirole Streets Fund. One more?
Yes. You're on a roll, Paul.
Next up is an SBO to provide year-end appropriation authority for certain funds, which are projected to potentially exceed their 2021 current appropriation levels. This can be found beginning on PDF page 463 of your packet. Those funds and amounts are Iron Bridge Tiff Debt Service Fund, $200; University District LRF Debt Service Fund, $1; and the Golf Fund, $340,745. Unappropriated reserves in each fund will cover the expenditure increases. And happy to take any questions.
Councilwoman Kinnear.
Thanks. For the golf piece, does that not come out of parks, I guess, a park function?
They have their own enterprise fund for the golf courses that's paid for from the user fees. So it'll come out of the Golf Fund Unappropriated Reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, Paul, thank you. The next item relates to the Criminal Justice Services Department, and Howard Delaney from that department is here to present. Howard?
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for having me. This is an issue for an SBO regarding differences between the actual rent build under the interlocal by the county and the amount projected. It seems to be an ongoing issue based on the fact projections are done because of the contract and billing cycle from the county between one and three years in arrears. So the estimate for any given year, including 2020, which is the one we're dealing with, is chronically short. So we've been working on some mechanisms to prevent that in the future. But again, for this year, we're looking to transfer money from salary savings to make up the shortage in the interlocal space amount that was originally budgeted. Any questions?
Not seen any. Thank you for being here, Howard.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Next, we have a Fire EMS fund that was discussed a couple of committee meetings ago, but Chief Shafer from the Fire Department is here to further present this issue and respond to any questions that council may have. Chief?
Thanks, Mike. Ordinance C36150 is essentially receiving a reimbursement for overtime from predominantly the Department of Natural Resources, receiving those dollars into the Fire Department's budget. Questions about that one?
Not seeing any, Brian. Thank you. Next, we go to resolutions and final reading ordinances. The first resolution relates to SERs, and I have not been able to get a hold of Phil today, and maybe he is on the call, but we may, or, Councilwoman Maum?
Yes, I can give an update.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember McCaffrey was in attendance as well. We had a productive discussion with the SERs Board about options to improve the health of the SER funded amount. And the recommendation was from SERs is to go forward as proposed for the 10.25%, because it was based on previous year's actuarial forecasting. They also seem to be quite supportive of the one-time potential contribution that would be made from the already budgeted amount that was to be put into SERs for the vacant positions. We have well over 200, and now I'm hearing 230 vacant positions in the city of Spokane. And we had budgeted contributions into the SERs program, and SERs depends on some of that continuity. So we would possibly be able to come forward with some kind of a budget adjustment for the end of the year in order to move that money that's already been set aside that was to go to SERs into the SERs for one time. The SERs funded level needs to continue to climb for the health of the city's financial rating. And I don't know if Councilmember McCaffrey wants to weigh in. He was there.
No, I think that covered it well, and yeah, we would just move ahead as it's proposed on the agenda for the first portion of that.
And I want to thank the council for the time, for the research and the outreach that we did to the SERs Board. I think we need to continue to have conversations with them on this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you both for covering this. The next item is a proposed resolution to form an ad hoc equity subcommittee of the Finance and Administration Committee, and Councilmember Wilkerson is, would present this resolution.
Thank you. So in accordance with our comp plan, we need to do engagement, and our other community members of color need to be at the table and represented. We looked at that and thought a subcommittee of the finance would be an excellent place for them to be, to have input. They are advisory, but it would bring them into the process of what happens in the city, and they would be the voices that have been missing all this time. And as we go forward, we're asking for your support on this. I know our equity person, Alex, is on the call also. Alex, was there anything else you wanted to add to this? You're on mute.
Good afternoon, council. So I took myself off camera and didn't unmute myself. But we presented this at Finance and Administration Committee on October 18th. But yeah, I'm just here if we have any questions.
Not seeing any. I would move on to the next items. And it's actually a number of proposed ordinances that are covered in the hearing section, which were discussed at the last meeting. And so if the council doesn't mind, I'll cover the first reading ordinances first and then go to the hearings. And I see Kevin is with us in case there's additional questions or comments before next week. So Council President, the first reading ordinance for the downtown parking bid that I believe was discussed at the committee meeting today, but if you have anything further to add or if any council member has any questions.
Yeah, I'll just say for anyone who's viewing, so we're going to, we just signed a new contract with the Downtown Spokane Partnership to administer the bid for the next five years. And our legal team noted that some language needed to be updated. So even though we just signed it, we're going to sign another one that changes, just tweak some language on the termination paragraphs. But the bigger thing is updating our bid ordinance, which we do every time we sign a new contract. And so this new ordinance update would just incorporate the new contract terms. And we negotiated that out with the bid administration and the council members that serve on the bid and the DSP. And so I don't think it's too controversial, but it'll be set for a final vote on the 6th of December.
Thank you, Council President. And next, we go to the hearings. And Kevin Freebot is here with us at the meeting this afternoon. And Kevin gave a detailed presentation last week, but he's here in case council members have any additional questions or issues to raise ahead of the hearings to be held next week. Kevin, you may have something further to say as well.
No, I think you encapsulated it well. Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. These are the six comp plan amendments that we have been processing all year. Five amendments to the land use plan map for individual properties throughout the city, and then one set of changes to the bike map. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I'll see you all next week.
Any questions or comments for Kevin? Not seeing any. Finally, the second proposed hearing is we would request continued hearing on the proposed budget until November, or from November 22nd. And Paul's still with us if council has any questions or issues to raise regarding the continuing of the hearing. Not seeing any. Council President and council members, this would be the recommended, proposed advanced agenda for November 29th.
Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda?
So moved. Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, the advanced agenda is approved as read. And that brings us to today's agenda. I haven't heard any requests for changes to the legislative agenda. And so I think that brings us to the consent agenda. Ms. Fister?
Wilcox Company, Akron, Ohio, of two replacement boiler fan assemblies, $408,296.56, including tax and shipping. Number two, low bid of Cameron Riley LLC Spokane Valley, Washington, for the Thorfreya reconstruction, Hartsen Desprague, $8,959,655, an administrative reserve of $895,965.50, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside, East Central and Lincoln neighborhoods. Number three, accept grant from the Washington State Office of Public Defense for use in public defense from January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2023, $186,000 revenue. Number four, multiple-family housing property tax exemption conditional agreement with Proclaim Liberty West LLC for the construction of 54 housing units at parcel numbers 35212.2918, 35201.6301, 35201.6309, 35201.6310, commonly known as 610, 622, and 628 South Perry Street and 1527 East Hartsen. This conditional agreement will ultimately result in the issuance of a final certificate of tax exemption to be filed with the Spokane County Assessors Office post-construction. Number five, contract with Structured Communication Systems Incorporated, Clackamas, Oregon, for Cohesity Two Node Block Storage Expansion with three years hardware support and installation services from November 29, 2021, through November 28, 2024, utilizing NCPA Contract Number 01-97, $129,897.1. Number six, contract extension with Systems and Software Incorporated, Menusky, Vermont, for the Utility Information System Project from October 1, 2021, through May 31, 2022, $492,947.50, including tax. Number seven, report of the mayor of pending A, payments and claims, claims and payments previously proved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through November 12, 2021. Total $4,953,668.29, with Parks and Library claims approved with respect to boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $4,362,227.85. B payroll claims of previously proved obligations through November 13, 2021, Number eight, City Council Meeting Minutes for November 8, 2021.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Council President?
Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make a comment on four of the consent agenda. So as you guys know, I've been pretty hard on the multifamily tax exemption, and you can see I'm voting for this one. And I just wanted to thank Proclaim Liberty for their efforts in making all of their units appropriately affordable for those who, you know, need access to housing. And I just wanted to thank them publicly for that and their efforts to continue to help people who might not be able to find housing in this tough market. So I wanted to thank them for that. And this is what our multifamily tax exemption should be used for. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda is adopted. We are going to be adjourned until 6:00 PM. We'll see you all then.